Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There's also an automatic external defibrillator on the back wall of the Legislative Chamber. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County. We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, February 28, 2023. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, March 14, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. Resolutions D through F. There is no need for executive session, so it could include adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Present.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, February 28, 2022. I think that's supposed to be 23. And approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, March 7, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero, and we will be sure to put the correct date.
Thank you. Consent agenda, items A through H with the removal of item B. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We have one resolution recognizing March as Women's History Month in Douglas County, Nebraska. And I would ask Commissioner Boyle to start off the reading of our resolution, please.
Whereas Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987. And whereas the week of March 8, which is International Women's Day, was selected as the focal point of this monthly observance. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States of America in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. And whereas the National Women's History Alliance, which spearheaded the movement for March being declared National Women's History Month, has announced the Women's History theme for 2023 as, quote, "celebrating women who tell our stories," unquote.
And whereas throughout 2023, the National Women's History Alliance will encourage recognition of women past and present who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcast, and more, podcast, and more. And whereas women have been leaders, not only in securing their right of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolishment movement and emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and study of American history. Whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force and establishing early charitable philanthropic and culture institutions in our nation. And whereas women have served our country courageously in the military and as elected officials. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes March as Women's History Month and continues to honor the many incredible achievements of women in Douglas County, Nebraska, and throughout the nation, dated the 7th day of March, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Morning.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. Had a very interesting coincidence. A few days ago, I received an anonymous letter in the mail, a good citizen that had been watching replays of the February 7 Douglas County Board meeting. I don't know which version they were watching of, but I don't trust YouTube's version. However, I'll read the letter. I appreciate you fighting the good fight weekly. You stand up for conservative viewpoint. Keep up the good work. It doesn't go unnoticed. While watching the February 7, 2023 Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting this past weekend, I don't know whether that's YouTube or Cox Cable or what, but if you fast forward to hour two, 34 minutes, 43 seconds, while you are speaking, you will hear a woman's voice say, "Nobody likes you." An elected Douglas County Commissioner saying that in front of your face. It's concerning to me. You're not treated well by a handful of Commissioners, week after week. Everyone has the right to voice their opinion, even if it is different. I hope you address this with the Commissioners and you get an apology, which I do not expect, from the woman who said this in front of you. A copy of the letter plus the envelope that it came in, so you don't think I'm making it up. But I sat down and watched the YouTube version. I did not hear it. I don't read lips. I didn't really notice anybody making comments to one another while I was speaking. So I don't know what version she actually watched. I can't prove that it's true. I have requested copies before and been denied. And as your citizen's comment thing says, I've been denied when I've asked the county administration to make it have a presentation on the Open Meetings Act. So that's been my thing lately. And finally, I do support the nonpartisan ballot legislation in the State House and Measure 432. The other thing, finally. It appears to the, according to the Reader Magazine, that they get a lot more information from you people and the city people than citizens do. And I think that's kind of appalling. But I guess they can come down and talk to you privately. However, what they do get from you isn't necessarily private. The Reader Magazine is very good at reporting on things here, and they have a series called Disinvested you might be interested in. Inside the last, inside the last few editions, they have this big guy. There is a national association of people that are going to hold you accountable. They're going to hold you accountable more so than I, I guess, because they have more power and they have a tax-free status. So I guess you should be careful who you listen to. Maybe just listen to the citizens at the podium rather than somebody that might be a reporter, or maybe they're a reporter, but they're not disclosing it when they come to the microphone. The Reader admits to being a part of that association. So that was one more reason why I think there should be a major presentation involving the Attorney General.
One minute.
And the county attorney.
One minute.
I'm sorry?
I just said one minute.
Okay. In each county, invited should be the citizens and the other local elected bodies that have open meetings or supposedly have open meetings. So that, so that the legal biggles can explain to both sides of the organizations what is and is not your rights. I asked the former Attorney General one time at a meeting, and he said the intent of that act is for the citizens. But all the local bodies around Omaha anyway, and I guess even in Fremont now, have their own versions of what those open mating rules are. And you guys have your own version of what reasonable means. We don't think a lot of those rules are reasonable.
Thank you, Larry.
So it needs to be presented so that we can discuss it with them and get the answers for us.
Thank you, Larry.
And for you. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if you guys have a climate action plan. However, the City of Omaha is going to be having one put together or be consulted for one. However, though, I don't want to criticize you because you guys have done things that help the environment. And the one quick win that you guys already moved is having geothermal energy for your buildings. I've always thought that was a great idea, and I don't understand why other governments, public governments, public bodies like the city council, I mean, the city government of Omaha, they have tons of public buildings. So do the, so does the Omaha Public Schools. They have a lot of building. I don't know if they have thermal energy, if they use thermal energy, but that was a great idea that I understood you guys incorporated into your facility operations. And then I do want to agree with Larry about the Opens Meetings Act. It's, it's something that has to be followed at every meeting. And it's up to the county attorney and the state attorney general to enforce the Opens Meeting Act. And it's also up to Larry to enforce it by submitting a complaint in court, which, for some reason, he hasn't done yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our committees. The first is the Finance Committee Budget Report as presented. Next, we have Community Services, the Environmental Services Department update on planning and zoning and landfill-related items. Kent's here today for that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Hall, Environmental Services Director. And I'm going to give you just a quick briefing on a couple of items that are making their way through the Department, Planning Commission, and so on. This is a copy of our future land use map and a comprehensive development plan. So one of the things that this attempts to do is really to set policy for what we want to see with land use. So, for example, the green, or excuse me, let's start with the yellow color. That is an area within the Papua watershed that can be developed at a higher density to, because that's going to be served by the main interceptor sewer. So we don't want to encumber that with a bunch of acreage development, things like that, that would make that problematic. So the other thing that's happening is we have a lot of land out in the floodplain between the Elkhorn and the Platte River. And historically, that's been kind of a mishmash of different kinds of development as, as that area has been subject to sand and gravel extraction. There's some lakes development and so on. But there's also been a lot of kind of acreage development out there. And over time, some of those acreage developments have kind of developed certain uses that have gone with them. They have started out mainly as kind of home occupation type things where, and I'm going to kind of pick on the landscape business uses, where, okay, somebody's doing a little bit of landscape business use out of their, out of their residence, out of the acreage. And then it just kind of gets a little bit bigger. And so at this point, we have a number of properties in this area between the two rivers that have a variety of different kinds of uses going on. Some of them are landscape related, some are kind of construction related and so on. What this brings to the area is a kind of a mishmash of uses that are kind of in a residential area. Some are in an ag area. Some are kind of on fringe areas where it's kind of hard to tell when you're just driving through, is this really agriculture? Is this like acreage development, residential, and so on. So in response to really some initial complaints that, that we had received a few years ago, I think some of those probably came to some board members and so on, we initiated a process of looking at some of these properties and really kind of getting an overall assessment of, yes, we've got some areas here that, that we have some uses on, that technically they're not conforming to the zoning code. So what we are attempting to do through a, through a process with the Planning Commission is to identify what we can do to tweak the zoning regulations in order to allow these uses to continue while respecting some boundaries on those. We have gotten in the process a bunch of comments and, and input from property owners who have these uses. And we're starting with the landscape uses in particular. And we, next week at the Planning Commission, will have our first public hearing looking at those landscape uses. And so on your upcoming board agendas, you're going to have initially some zoning regulation amendments that will help us craft the framework for allowing these uses, right? That's, that's kind of a, a general way I can put that. Then after that, you'll have some special use permits for each of these properties, and we're going to do that in an expedited manner so that it, it's not as encumbering on the, the actual property owners. It's going to be less encumbering on staff, and hopefully it's going to be a lot easier overall for everyone to understand. And we're also looking at, well, as I said, the amended application process be just a little more of an expedited process. So those are some things that will be coming up on your board agendas. I guess before I go on, are there any questions about any of that aspect?
Can you just go through, so then we'll ask questions at the end?
Sure. I can do that. Switching over to, to the State Street landfill, this is our closed landfill facility at 126 and State Street. We are working through a process now, and we've, we've been doing this for the last couple of years, where we are gradually moving towards a true post-closure status for that landfill. We are looking to reduce the amount of monitoring and reporting that we do, because we've shown through our monitoring and reporting that we've taken care of the environmental issues there for the most part. And so we're working very actively with the Department of Environment and Energy at the state, and we've had several meetings with them, all very productive. And we are working towards that kind of true post-closure so that we have reduced requirements on our end that will equate to some cost savings for us and you, for, for the taxpayers. And also then, we, we've worked with Joe Lorenz and, on the, the financial assurance piece in the past, and we've gotten a lot of reductions on that, so we don't have a lot of money tied up in, in that. We're also continuing to work with Bio Resource Development. They're, they're the, the third party that is taking the landfill gas off of the, off of the system out there, putting it into, cleaning it up and putting it into the MUD pipeline. Then, of course, on the horizon, we have a feasibility study with OPPD that'll kick off later this year. So we, we may have some, some solar power things going on at the landfill as well. So a number of moving parts with the State Street landfill, just again, a quick update on where we're at with that, and I'll keep you advised of that going forward. That's all I have today formally, so.
All right.
Open for questions.
Commissioner Boyle.
A couple of things. First, on the, the first information you had about the zoning changes, are, what, what guidelines are you using to develop, or is the Planning Commission using to develop these potential amendments?
Guidelines are, are kind of severalfold. One of them is, we want to use good, kind of best practices in planning and zoning. We want to make sure that we are getting good input from property owners. We have the overall policies in the comprehensive plan that we want to stick to as, as best we can. But we also realize that, hey, maybe there are some tweaks here. And the overall intent is, is really to, if we can, if we can allow the use in kind of the, the form that it's going right now, we want to be able to identify what the, kind of the guardrails are for that and allow them to, to operate within that. And we feel like by having the correct zoning and then having the appropriate special use permit for that particular property, if there's a situation that, that's kind of unique, there can be some conditions on that, and that allows a little bit of control from, from the public standpoint, but it also allows the business to continue.
Okay.
So does that help?
Yeah. And then are we actively reaching out to the businesses and citizens in that area so they know that this is being reviewed so they have?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. We've had, starting in, well, they've known, a number of them have known about it, but we had a, a pub, not a public hearing, but a discussion session with the Planning Commission in December of last year, and also this past month in February. And a number of those landscape business owners, property owners were there. And we have had additional conversations with them through email, phone calls, and they all get notices. We've sent a lot of notices for next week's meeting. Those notices also go to adjacent property owners that don't have those uses. So, you know, that's, we will, you try to reach as many people as possible. If we get some additional comments, we'll hold it up if, if we need to, to be able to discuss it some more and get a better product. But we also want to move forward as quickly as we can so that those uses now are truly legal in the zoning code. And that helps protect those, those users as well.
Good. That's, that's great. I think the, the biggest issue is when citizens feel like they haven't had input. I think that's where we end up with a lot of, a lot of issues. So I think that, that active engagement as opposed to just sending out a notice, I think keeping that active engagement is going to be important there.
Sure.
And then also, just as an aside, you mentioned the landfills. I like our collaboration with OPPD and MUD. I mean, it was going on to, whether we have, you know, a climate action plan. I think we do do a lot of things with trying to engage in renewable energy as, as best we can with those types of relationships. So, so I think that's really helpful. And then something that you didn't quite have, it's kind of an aside, is when you talk about landfills, the, we are receiving soil from oil spills from other states. And you and I talked briefly about how we feel like, I guess, can you just comment on basically our conversation about whether those oil spills and bringing oil into, oil soaked, oil soaked soil into our landfills, how you feel like there are safety, safety measures taken to ensure that it doesn't spill over into, into water, for example?
Sure. I, I guess the first thing is that this type of a project comes under the special event authorization that the Board has, has given me. That was back in October of 2009. And so this is, this is a very similar project to, to a lot of others that, that we've had. The reason these things go into, into
One minute.
This particular landfill, which is a, by, technically, is a subtitle D landfill, is because they have the protections. They have the, the liners and the other protections that are needed to be able to contain particular material. And so that's, and that's part of the trust we put in waste management to have, because they have the, the permitting through the state and the federal authorities to do it in a way that protects groundwater. They, they have all of those systems in place. And they also do a lot of analytical tests on materials that are coming in. There has to be a waste profile associated with that. And they're very diligent about that. They're particularly diligent on this pro, and they have had numerous analytical studies on, on this particular project, I know.
All right. Very good. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Following up on Commissioner Boyle's inquiry, you and I have communicated on this Kansas Pipeline oil spill waste. My understanding is Kansas has refused to put this in their own landfills, and so it's coming here to us. And in my conversations with you, I think we discussed this, what is it called? Special?
Special event?
Yes. And you indicated that those are done pursuant to a document from the landfill people who say they've examined the contents of the Kansas Pipeline spill product that's coming here and found it to be.
It's accept, it's an acceptable material to go into that landfill.
Okay. I think I asked you if we could get a copy of that. Does that document actually exist? Do you have that?
The document where I authorized that particular project?
So.
Because that, that's what I would have.
I think that the meat of the matter is the document that says that the, the materials coming from the Kansas spill that apparently Kansas doesn't want to deal with, coming to us, does not contain harmful pollutants that we're putting in our landfill. That's the document, right?
That's much, that's a material document. That would be the waste profile and, and that analytical document. And that would be a, that's a waste management document. But I, and Ryle Palmer, the site manager with Waste Managers here, maybe, Ryle, if you could address that, whether that's available or not. if you could address that, whether that's available or not?
Morning. Commissioner Ryle Palmer with Waste Management. Just to clarify on a couple of things, we do do analytical on it. The customer pays for that and owns that? I can give you their address.
I'm sorry, could you speak up just a second?
Oh, sorry. I'm getting over a head cold here, I apologize.
Yeah, I hear you.
But that is the customer's information that they supply to us, because we give them parameters that they have to test certain ways. I can give you the information to get with that customer, to get that, their information. The other thing I would like to clarify, as you mentioned, that Kansas refused this, that is not how that went. We bid the project, our landfill in Kansas and our landfill here are about the same distance from the spill. We are just better equipped to handle it size-wise and people-wise.
So, do we normally accept out-of-state materials?
So, landfills are regional, and with our proximity to the state line, we have taken, we do take waste from out of state. And waste from our state does leave to go to a different state, yes.
Okay. So there is a document that you have from the, is it the Keystone XL Pipeline people or?
TC Energy, yes.
Sorry?
TC Energy.
TC Energy? That says they've tested these materials and found them to be not dangerous? Is that?
Correct, they're not hazardous, correct.
Okay. Could we have a copy of that? We've got constituents that are concerned with air and water quality relative to bringing pollutants in from other states, and they've reached out to me, I don't know if they've reached out to Commissioner Boyle for, you know, just an inquiry about what about this? And we could give them some assurance that adequate testing has been made of these materials to determine that they're not going to be harmful when we put them in our landfill. That would be a good thing. Could we get that document?
I can get you the information for TC Energy that has that.
Okay. And how much of this material are we getting from the Pipeline people in Kansas?
I don't have that number as far as, I mean, that's a TC Energy number that.
Okay. It might be a good idea to have that too, but my understanding is this is a rather significant oil spill from the tar sands that the Keystone XL Pipeline is transferring. That particular pipeline was specifically denied access to the state of Nebraska, in part because of environmental concerns about exactly what we're talking about, spills and pollutants, things like that. So the idea that we're now accepting the consequences of what we decided not to let happen in our state from Kansas is a little concerning, and so any assurances that we can get from you relative to the due diligence that you've exercised.
Time.
And I'll come back to this.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to, Kent, thank you. I was at the Planning Committee meeting in February, and you did have good attendance there. I would suspect there were probably 20 to 25 people there, and they asked some hard questions. Oddly enough, I didn't say a word, but it was very informative. The, one of the things that I heard afterward is that a lot of folks, and you can assure, you can assure everybody, I would think, that when special use permits are put in place, and you and I didn't talk about this offline, but we can too, some of the concern was every time they're going out to get a use permit, it's a death by a thousand cuts, right? So in other words, I put this in, I get charged, you know, throw out a number, 200 bucks, or I get charged 500 bucks. Next thing you know, you got a business with a cash flow, and they're going, I just took eight use permits, special use permits, and now I'm, you know, sunk in to the tune of about 1,500 bucks. What they were worried about, and maybe it's not something that they should worry about, is that, is there a, maybe not yet, is there a strategy to say, look, this is how much this is going to end up costing? And I think a lot of those discussions are probably going on behind the scenes, but that's what some of the folks, of course, I'm walking out the door and they're asking me, right? And I go, look, I don't know. I mean, every time you get a special use permit, sure, there's an application, and there's a fee associated with it. So that was some of the concern, I don't think anybody brought that up. So my, I'm not asking you for an answer to it, I'm just saying they're looking at it from a budget standpoint.
Sure.
Right? So, and it's going to be different for everybody, I would think. So I'm not asking you to comment, I'm just saying, just a little food for thought, next time we have a meeting, which I guess would be next week, some of that stuff might come up.
I can give you the answer right now.
Okay.
There will be an amended process, we're going to reduce the fee, and the intent is that this is a one-time process, and it runs with the land. Now, there may be a condition there that says, hey, when this particular person sells, that the use ends. Now, whether the Planning Commission goes along with that, whether you as a board go along with that, that's for you to decide, that's part of the process. But the intent would be that, one, we're making it simpler, we're making it less expensive, it's a one-time cost, they don't have to come back here, unless there's some situation where the Planning Commission and you all think that, you know, wow, we don't want, we need some more control over this, for whatever reason. Because you have done that with special uses in the past on different things, where it's like, hey, we want a check on this every year, and we want to report on this, or we want, we want to put a little more control over this because it's potentially a lot more of a potential issue from a nuisance standpoint or something like that. That's not where we're going here.
Right.
We have thought that through, and part of what you see on the screen right now, that amended application process, it's meant to be simple, less expensive, less encumbering for the property owner and the use, and it's a one-time deal. So they're not going to have to worry about that on their balance sheet in years to that, oh, I'm going to get another 300 or 500 or whatever number that is. That's not the intent.
Yeah, that's great, and in fairness to you, you did mention that, that was in the presentation.
Correct.
But sometimes the devil's in the details. They say, well, a reduced fee, what does that mean?
Right.
Hey, further, Kent, I want to thank you both.
One minute.
I've received, Commissioner Kavanaugh and Commissioner Boyle aren't the only ones that received information back on the oil spill. I get tons of email. Thank you for the clarification, thank you for the understanding. We may need more. Commissioner Kavanaugh pointed that out. It would be, I just want to be fairly clear with people, you know, why all of this ended up happening, and you've been straightforward and clear about that. If I can be clear in my emails back to people, it's valuable. So I get it, but again, the devil's in the details. What, how much is actually being put there? Where else is it going around the United States? I mean, all of this is regional, and why are we answering questions about it right now? So I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Just following up on our discussion here, this is from Nebraska Public Broadcasting regarding this soil to Nebraska. It says, "A Nebraska landfill agreed to take the contaminated soil from the Keystone oil spill. Trucks began hauling away the topsoil on January 17th from the site in Washington County, where the Keystone ruptured on December 7th, and sprayed extra sticky tar sands oil called dilutum betunum or dilbit onto several acres of prairie, cropland, and Mill Creek." Quote, "Laboratory analysis of the oil and waste defined it as not being hazardous," unquote, KDHE said in an email, which I believe is the pipeline, right?
No, KDHE is like our NDE, it's the state of Kansas.
State of Kansas, thank you. "A Shawnee County landfill north of Topeka, Rolling Meadows, has previously been named as a potential destination for the waste from the oil spill." Quote, "Landfills have discretion on whether or not they wish to receive waste," unquote, KDHE said. "Doesn't point landfill near Omaha except the waste," unquote. In addition to the contaminated soil, "Bezant Point will take other waste from the site such as oily protective clothing and absorbent pads, floating booms used to block the oil slick on the surface of Oil Creek." I think from what I've received, the concern is regarding this dilbit substance, which often includes benzene, which is a known human carcinogen, and the possibility that this could escape into the air, water, soil around Bennington where the landfill is. So, you know, that's kind of the point of the whole inquiry, and we're just trying to pursue this and let the public know, as Commissioner Friend said, so that they'd have assurances that, you know, we're being safe and responsible relative to the inclusion of this Keystone XL Pipeline substances from a spill in another state coming into our landfill and being incorporated in our landfill. So those documents that we talked about, if you could share those with us, presumably they have some analysis of these substances that could give people those assurances?
Yes.
Have you reviewed these yourself?
So, we have a team of people in Waste Management that review these that are, that is their whole job. So unless they say it's okay to take and meets our parameters, we don't take it. So they would be the ones that review it and make that determination.
Okay. And we're being paid to accept these substances, correct?
Correct.
Is it a standard rate or is it an exceptional rate? I mean, how is that determined?
That would go under the special event project that Kent mentioned earlier.
Okay. If you have anything to add on that point?
Yes, there are particular special events, I have a price breakdown, and what the county's receiving for that is usually on a per-ton basis.
Okay. Do we have any idea how much the Pipeline people are paying to have us dispose of their waste?
The county gets $3 per ton for that, and Waste Management's going to get a portion of it, and because it's not classified as a potential alternate daily cover, the state also is going to get $1.25 per ton for that. So those all factor into that.
Sure. And they estimated there were 2 million gallons of waste that went into Mill Creek, and they've been running trucks up here.
One minute.
For some time. Are they still bringing waste in to our landfill?
Yes, they currently are, yes.
Do we know how long this is going to go on?
I do not, no.
Do we know the quantity of waste so far that we've accepted?
I don't have that number with me, no.
But we could find out, the tonnage of that.
Yes, yes.
And from that, we could determine this.
Correct.
Fee thing.
Correct.
Thank you. I'll follow up with you on that, but I appreciate the documents that we discussed. Thanks a lot.
No other questions or comments? Oh, go ahead, Louis.
Louis Jimenez, 27, O'Nah, Dewey Avenue. I think I heard that the Douglas County doesn't have a climate action plan. If that's incorrect, let me know. I'm wondering about this HASTRI material. Why isn't the county testing the material as it comes? Doesn't have to test every load, but testing every once in a while as it comes in. It's dirt with soaked in oil. That's, you can test that? Create your own documents on the analysis. It's unfortunate that the public can't see the documents from the, from TCE, because that would tell us what's going in the landfill. If we can't see those documents, could we get like a range? Like, this material, is it below this or it's not above that? That would be helpful too. But I think the most, I think the easiest way to get access to that kind of document is for the county to test the material themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, thank you for the updates.
You're welcome, Commissioners, and again, you'll be seeing something probably in April on some of the planning.
Can you hang on one second, because it looks like, I can't read it from here, but it looks like somebody has their hand raised.
David Corbin?
Yep. Mr. Corbin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can, yep. Go ahead.
All right, yes, I'm sorry I came in late on this, and if you already said this, please forgive me, but the tar sands, when it goes through pipelines, is, has to be diluted with substances like benzene. And what troubles me, benzene is a carcinogen, and what also troubles me is that the companies have proprietary chemicals that they put in. So if they don't tell us what the chemicals are, how can we determine that there's not hazardous? When we know, of course, benzene is, what else is being tested for?
So, just to answer that a little bit, I don't know the whole list of what is being tested for. I can give you guys, give you an email to go to TC Energy, they can tell you what they're testing for, but I personally don't know the whole list.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle?
It seems obvious to me that there are concerns among us and the citizens about what is contained in that, so I would appreciate it if we could have someone, maybe one of the engineers who does soil testing, come back at another time. I think to have TCE supply the, what is in their soil is kind of, it could be, I don't want to say not dishonest, but maybe not complete, or if there's something proprietary, we may not know exactly what those ingredients are. So I think it may be helpful if we have one of the testing engineers come by and tell us what's being sent to us first and foremost. Second of all, I think it would be helpful to have more detail about the lining of the landfill, to make sure that, just information to assure us all that that really is secure and that there isn't leak out of the lining to make, that could potentially contaminate things too. So I think we may need another visit from the folks at Waste Management with those types of details.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kent. Next, we'll move to Human Resources, the weekly personnel report from civil services presented. We have no legislative items to take action on this week. There is a report in your packet about the happenings that, the things that have happened here of late in the legislature. We do have need for an executive session for litigation. And so do we have a motion to go into executive session for litigation?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh to reconvene and adjourn, second by Commissioner Boyle. Motion passes seven to zero, we're adjourned at 10:03 a.m.